Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, October 17th County Commission Meeting. If you'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, we appreciate your attendance today. I'd like to remind everybody to silence their cellphones, please, and meeting documents are available next to Commissioner Bender. If you need a listening device, Carol could help you with that. With that, we'll go to routine business. Item one is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission minutes from October 10th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item three are bills to be paid of six hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and forty-four cents.
Are there bills?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Barth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today's bills include, there were five bills for outside attorneys on court-appointed criminal cases, including one for forty-two hundred dollars. Five bills for over a thousand. We also had a hundred thousand that went to Zooker Technologies through emergency management, and we had three funerals at the county covered at the cost of six thousand dollars.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments about the bills? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item four are reports, and we have the auditor's account of the county treasurer as of September 30th. We have the Minnehaw County coroner report for July, the human services 2017 third quarter report for the Minnehaw and Lincoln Counties, Minnehaw County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for September, and the Minnehaw County Sheriff's report for September, and all those have been filed for review. Item five is personnel action. Consider a motion to approve routine personnel action.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second for personnel action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. There's no applications for abatement today. Item seven is a notice to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for purchase of property located at 908 West North Sioux Falls, West North Avenue, Sioux Falls, legally described as lots one, two, three, four, and five, inclusive of lots 25 and 26, all in block 52, airport addition to the city, Minnehaw County, according to the recorded plat thereof. Good morning, Craig.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Starting in the summer of 2017, the commission took action to declare this county-owned property surplus, and following the steps in codified law, you looked at and considered several different options. The option that you directed the commission office to develop this notice regarding was for bids, and so, as you can see with this notice here, it's going to be published in different newspapers. The land here at 908 Northwest Avenue is a great piece of land and building as well, located right across from the event center, the arena, the convention center, and a couple of hotels, so whether it would continue to be used for office space by the buyer, or there would be opportunity as well for redevelopment, it does provide significant opportunity here in Sioux Falls for someone to look at. These bids will be accepted through November 15th at 10:30 in the morning, following which there'll be a bid opening, and then you will see what the different bid options are. The commission does have the right to reject all bids, or the commission can choose to accept a bid as well in the process, but if you have any questions, we'd be happy to further answer those for you.
Are there any questions for Craig? I think we need to just explain a little bit our intent. We hired USD last year, and their master students and their program business students to help us do a space analysis, if you will, and that came back and said that if we did some reorganization of current space that was unused and redeveloped this facility, we could potentially sell that building, use those funds to support this building and the reorganization and the staffing needs for 15 years. So that's our intent, is to sell this building, which is underused, and not have that liability, if you will, for maintenance and repairs and all the other things that go with that particular spot, and use those funding resources to support the need for growth in this particular building, so. That's my Reader's Digest version of meeting many, many times, I think, over the years in getting this frankly to the point where we're at now, and Craig and staff, we appreciate everybody's support of choosing a plan and moving ahead, because ultimately, this is a less expensive alternative for 15 years than any other one that we've looked at, so. Any other comments from anyone? Thank you for your support.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to publish a notice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. There are no planning and zoning notices, no petition for compromise. Now would be the time for public comment on any items that are not on the agenda. We would be happy to hear from you. No one's moving, so we'll go to regular business. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider an application for special event on-sale liquor license for Prairie Pasta Inc. for an event on November 4th and December 1st at the Blue Haven Barn. Olivia?
Yes, as you mentioned, Prairie Pasta Inc. will have events on November 4th and December 1st. They're both weddings, and they do already have the annual on-sale liquor license, so this is just for the special event.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the Prairie Pasta organization that would like to speak? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the application for the special event. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 11 is a presentation of the SDSU Extension Summer 4H Program and a recognition of the 4H Hall of Fame recipients, Jerry and Carmen Grace. Chuck, good morning.
Morning. Chuck Martinelli, SDSU Extension, 4H Program Extension Department. That's about all on my business card. So I'm here to guys go through the PowerPoint I put together on the 4H program. There it is. And I also brought with me our Hall of Fame recipients for 2017, and I'll get to Jerry and Carmen here in a minute. So that's my beautiful mugshot. Mission statement of 4H empowers youth to reach their full potential, working and learning in partnership with caring adults, and really that brings me to our next slide. Our photo here is our Hall of Famers. Jerry and Carmen Grace are here today. They've been instrumental helping the 4H program of Minnehaw County over the last several decades, sharing both their time and talents. The Minnehaw County 4H program has depended on both of them as a cornerstone of the program in several areas, everything from livestock to roping to leading a club to helping with the barbecue, and just support overall attending so many different events of the 4H program. They've always been willing to volunteer and ensure that the 4H program in the county is always running with its best foot forward. Jerry grew up in the county here and was involved in the 4H program. Over the years, he transitioned from being a member to serving as a club leader. For decades, Jerry's assisted with running events, such as serving as our livestock superintendent to announcing shows, serving our various committees, and volunteering for various activities, including being a club leader for many, many, many years. The couple has served as club leaders of the Minnehaw Hot Rods, 4H Club, since the club was established, and that's a big deal. That's the longevity of a club for many, many years. Under their watchful eye, this club is growing, has transitioned from a livestock club into a rodeo club, into transitioning again, from what I've heard, a lot of younger youth coming back into it. Carmen has also been very instrumental in the success of the 4H program in Minnehaw County. She has served as our roping event coordinator for longer than I've been here, and under her watchful eye, the roping event has become one of the best well-run events in the county. It's one of those events I can just show up and not have to do anything, because Carmen's got it all taken care of, which is amazing in its own right, just to be able to watch and see the kids in action and not be running around timing or checking out for safety things. She's got that all taken care of way ahead of time. Jerry and Carmen have been a wonderful part of our 4H program. Amanda Healy, a Minnehaw County 4H volunteer and parent, told us when I was younger, Jerry helped out with the cattle, and over the years, he's gotten more and more involved. Jerry broadened his commitment to the program by also helping with rodeo events. He's a positive influence for the youth involved, as is Carmen, too. Currently, the couple shows no signs of slowing down. They continue to assist the 4H programming and plan, as well as they have 13 grandchildren who are all going to be part of 4H, because they have to be. I just want to take a minute to have them recognized, and if they want to come up and say something, that'd be on their behalf, or Jerry might kill me.
Welcome, and congratulations, Jerry and Carmen. I'd also like to add that, as you saw by Jerry's hat, he's a Navy veteran, so we appreciate your service to the country also, obviously. So if you'd like to say a few words before we let you go, so to speak?
No. No, I've been involved in 4H ever since the beginning, when I was a nine-year-old. Nine of us boys got there, our dads, to start the club out in Humboldt there, and always liked 4H, going cattle.
Yeah. Carmen, do you have anything to say?
Well, 4H has been an impact-
You'll have to move a little closer, I'm sorry.
4H has been a real big impact on our kids, as we've got one son that works at a seed company, manages it. We've got a daughter that's an egg teacher down in Parker. We've got one that's a deputy sheriff, too, but we've got one that raises cattle for shows for 4Hers and has sales for them, and so it's kind of evolved into their adult life, and they've got kids, and their kids are just as active now as ours were, so we're pretty proud of it.
Well, you should be. You have a beautiful family, and it appears that they've gotten the message that 4H is extremely important, so thank you for everything you've done for that group, and welcome to the 4H Hall of Fame. So thank you.
Continue going with some of our summer program recap. Our highlight, of course, was the Hall of Fame selection. This is a selection that doesn't happen very often. The last family that selected was back in 2004, so this really was a big deal for us. Some of the other things that we had going on this summer, we ran several different events throughout the summer, including with the fair, prior to the fair. One of the coolest things we did this year is we opened up our fair learning to preschool groups, and we sent out postcards and had preschool groups come in, and had our junior leader program actually give tours of the farm, animals, and do a hands-on explanation where the kids explain what they do with the kids, how they work with them, to younger kids, three, four years old, so it was a nice addition to our normal fair field trips. We also ran several day camps this summer, Hartford, Sioux Falls, and Brandon, all had sites, several sites in Brandon, so we got out and about. We had youth selected for national trips this year. We had one of our youth, Kelsey Frost, was selected to serve as, went to National Conference in Washington DC this year, which is a pretty big deal, because only five kids in the entire state get chosen, so she was one of those selected. So very exciting for that. 4H clubs provided a lot of hands-on experience. One of the things we did this year was our club up in Colton came down to Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum, and they provided farm animals, and they gave, once again, hands-on learning to kids coming out there, families coming out there, talking about the animals they're raising, and how the production of those animals, what products those kids actually were using. And we have one of the biggest achievement days since I've been here, we had over 2,000 exhibits out there at the fairgrounds, so those are projects, those are livestock, and those are youth-in-action events, so very big fair for us this year. So the benefits, once again, of the 4H program here in the county, this year we've provided almost, we've provided so far this year, almost 3,000 hours' worth of volunteer hours. That's kids going out and doing things, such as cleaning ditches, picking up trash in parks, and it's a huge thing for the kids to learn that this is important to be a citizen of this county, is we have to keep it up. You know, it takes a group effort to make everything look nice. We've, once again, provided 60,000 hours of programming for youth in this county, reaching over 10,000 kids this year, so we partnered with programs, we've brought in people to help facilitate our programming, so it's not just Nathan and I doing it. We've got club leaders out there doing programming. We've got organizations who we've trained, the Washington Pavilion has their teachers using our curriculum, which we provide to them, so kind of a neat thing. Our 4H clubs in the county, I call them traditional 4H. Once again, these clubs meet as groups. They keep meeting. We just ended our 4H year in September 30th, just started a new one, so right now, all the clubs are electing new officers, so they're getting new presidents, new vice presidents, going through that whole procedure of nominating, running for office, and getting elected, or being voluntold, so, which does happen occasionally when no one wants to run for president. And our outreach programs continue to go on. Over the course of the year, we've partnered with 33 sites. Currently, I'm partnering with 11. Nathan, I think, is partnering with...
Twenty-two, if you have 11.
He's partnering with one, apparently, but no, we're partnering right now. I have 11, and Nathan has probably 11 or 12. I haven't counted, because we have kind of split up what we do. I do middle school and high school kids, he's focusing more on elementary, and I take over preschool, because they're more at my level, so. Other groups, basically, we've focused on throughout the entire county. We're not just focused in Sioux Falls here, but all these youth do receive a minimum of six hours of 4H hands-on education, so we spend a lot of time traveling. One of the programs on the highlights this summer, I went out to the JDC, did a gardening program with them out there. They've done gardening in the past. Last year, they had a fairly decent garden. This year, I was able to come in and work with them, teach the kids out there about the planting cycles, when to plant, and then I kind of expanded that, made them, what they were growing, they actually used out there, so the kids actually saw that produce that, you know, those cucumbers, tomatoes that were being grown, went into their meals, and we also made healthy snacks out of what was coming out of their garden. And we learned about that plant, so if the day's plant was tomato, we learned about where tomatoes came from, how tomatoes were growing, and then we learned, like, what snack we can make from tomato that's easy and cost-effective, keeping in mind that a lot of those kids out there have low income, so fancy food that's expensive, probably not going to stick with them, so. Overall, that is our 4H program from this summer, heading into this fall. I'll come back in a couple months, talk about what our fall and winter plans look like, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Chuck. Anyone have any questions for Chuck? Commissioner Hager?
Just a comment. I met with Chuck and Nathan this last week again, and another thing that they mentioned when we were visiting was that they had a booth at the Sidewalk Arts Festival this last fall, and had more people interested in joining 4H, and a new club, I believe, was kind of birthed out of that experience. The exciting part is just to look at where we've come in the last four or five years with 4H. We went from having our program cut to basically nothing, to back to two people, and the program is really growing in the county, and we're providing a valuable educational tool to our kids in agriculture, which is extremely important to Minnehaw County, so thank you again.
Thank you. Any other comments? Chuck and Nathan, thank you for all your hard work, and to Jerry and Carmen for your support of the program, and frankly, the core values that it teaches, and obviously, you're proud of your family, which you should be, but it is a big family that 4H serves, and for what it does, we get lots of returns versus spending money at the end where it's not as productive, so to speak, so. Again, thank you for what you do for the county and the people who live here, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item 12 is a presentation by the Sioux Empire Fair Association and its annual report. Scott Wick, morning, Scott.
Good morning. I would say to Jerry and Carmen, they're a big part of the Sioux Empire Fair as well with everything that they do, so congratulations on the Hall of Fame, and thank you to you and your family. Good morning. Scott Wick, Sioux Empire Fair Association President and CEO, here to give you our annual report on how the fair turned out, and before we start, thank you again for all your support of the fair and for everything that's happening out there. First off, attendance. Attendance for this fair was a total 298,598. That is up about a percent and a half over last year. We were doing real well going through Tuesday. We had 15,000 people for the Fluffy concert. We expected George Thurlgood and Alter Bridge on Wednesday and Thursday to perform much better than they did, but they did not. We researched those folks when they're at other venues in the Midwest and where they're at, look at their average attendance and their per cap on food and beverage, and on paper, they looked real, real, real good, and they were good, strong entertainers. For whatever reason, they were very poorly attended on Wednesday and Thursday, so that brought our numbers back down. However, all the other days did very well. Like I said, we had Fluffy that capped out at about 15,000 attendees, and it was a huge night, but the first weekend and the last weekend were very well-attended, so we're very pleased with that. Attendance was not affected by weather. You couldn't have ordered better weather. It rained overnight on Tuesday night, and a little bit during setup for egg appreciation, but other than that, it was very favorable temperatures. In fact, the first weekend, people had light jackets on. I'd never thought, you know, the first week in August, I would be wanting warmer weather, but we did. I'd like to recognize our major contributors for our day sponsors. Premier Weekend, First Premier Bank, Premier Bank Card, Billion Automotive on Monday for Billion Auto Customer Appreciation Day. Grand Falls Casino Golf Resort has been with us since we've been there for Tuesday for Senior Citizen Day. Touchstone Energy was a sponsor for egg appreciation on Wednesday. Thursday was the South Dakota Soybean Research Council. They backed out, and now we have the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, they jumped on, and of course, South Dakota Corn for the Egg Rules Weekend. Couple of special events that are notable in size, the Lewis Drug Senior Citizen Appreciation Lunch, and of course, the Salute to the Farmers, the Egg Appreciation Day, that's on Wednesday. Fairgrounds improvements, and again, thanks to the commission for investing in the property. The new restroom that's south of the, actually, it's north of the armory, so I didn't do that right, or removed the restroom that was south of the armory, that was the old comfort station, and put the new one up that's north of the grandstand. And one thing I'll say that was kind of interesting, just human behavior, we have the old restrooms in the grandstand, and we have the brand-new comfort station. After Fluffy or a big concert, you'd go into the new one, it was spotless. You'd go into the one under the grandstand, not so much, so the people do recognize that. And with the second slide, with the improvements in the expo building, you wouldn't believe the comments that people make. I guess if your property's clean and you have a clean bathroom, everything is good, but many, many comments on that, so I can't thank you enough for that. It's been a huge improvement that people have noticed and recognized. Some of the other improvements that have been made, we added more parking signs to the east parking lot to help people remember where they park when they come to our events. We got the, we bought the paint, and then had the gentleman donated his time for striping parking spaces by the Nordson Johnson Building. Had replaced a transformer in the camping area, finished the third phase of the asphalt ing that is west of the expo building, so west of the expo is now asphalted. New asphalt around the new restroom or the grandstand, and new asphalt in various other places on the property, and we are planning more asphalting to continue to get rid of a lot of that that's broken up and with the potholes and everything, and we've made vast improvements on that in the past years. Continued improvements, as you know and we're very thankful for, the tuck pointing and cock into the grandstand, reinforcing, we've been reinforcing all the full hookups in the campground where for the sewer hookups with two-foot cement pads that go around it, so when people drive over, they're not crushing them, and the model engineers, Railroad Society is still working on their building. They do have it all enclosed now, and I think it's fully shingled. Been a slow process for them, but they're using all volunteer work, and that is coming along. Get to the financials. Entertainment expenses. In the grandstand this year, entertainment expenses, including production, security, ushers, insurance, things of that nature, 649,000. Ground entertainment, we spent 29,000 and some change on. Other expenses is 27,000. Premiums paid out to exhibitors was 20, almost 24,000, 23,000 front porch entertainment, and the Budweiser Beer Garden of 4,250, for just a little over $757,000 spent on entertainment. Total expenses for the fair with the entertainment, grounds and admissions and vendors, 141,000. Beverage and concessions, 107. Admin, 70,000. Advertising and promotions, 52,000. Expenses on competitive exhibits and horse shows, 51, almost. Arts, horticulture and FFA, 13,000. Total expenses of 1,167,069. On the revenue side, admission camping miscellaneous, almost 388,000. Beverage and concessions, 251,000. Carnival, 250,000. Sponsors and other contributors, almost 219,000, and revenue from competitive exhibits, competitive aspects and exhibits, 150,000, for total revenue of 1,257,756. Which brought us a net income this year of 90,687, which is up from 62,000 from last So if anybody has any questions, I would say, thank you, excuse me, I'm on the tail end of the crud that's going around. I would say thank you for those who could make it out for our 10-cent tours. I mean, Cindy, you've been with us a long time, but Jeff, you were out, and Gene, you couldn't make it, but if you can ever, I know you're busy, find some time, we'd take you out and take you kind of a north-to-south tour of the property. Gerald was out, and Art and I took him out, so it's a big property, and I think everybody learned a little bit when they were riding with us. So again, if anybody has any questions about-
Commissioner Kurski?
And I was on your tour, too, and it's a whole lot worth more than a nickel, I'll tell you that.
All right.
Good tour. Just question, looking at the expenses, under the entertainment, you had 757,292. That doesn't carry forward down to the next line, where it's 732,085?
That would be an oversight on mine and Terry's, our accounts, so I would look into that and get back to you on that. I did notice that as I went through that, too.
Okay, okay. All righty. That was, I didn't know if that was supposed to be the same entertainment expense or not, so.
They should be the same.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bender?
So Scott, I'm just curious, you know, attendance was up slightly this year, revenue was up slightly, you had great weather.
Right.
So, you know, it appears from what I've heard you say today that really the differentiator is how well the concerts performed for you. Would that be accurate?
That would be accurate this year, yes. I will tell you, moving forward, the board has decided to eliminate the last Sunday, so we will go from, we'll have our sneak peek on Friday, and then we'll have the whole carnival midway, everything will be Saturday to Saturday, so that should alleviate some, definitely alleviate expenses for one day, and then we are also, the gate admission fee is going from $7 to $10. We have not raised that since we took over that first year. The second year we were there, we went to $7 for a gate. So to maintain the free concerts and get people there- So, to maintain the free concerts and get people there and, and keep that wheelhouse of our budget for those concerts at that price and provide that free show with paid fare admission, we thought that was the best route to go. So, that will be effective next fair.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I think she has a follow-up, but I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So, and I did notice that attendance had really dropped off on the last day, on August thirteenth. Is that why the decision was made to eliminate?
Well, it rained on, it did rain. We, we, we had light sprinkles on Sunday, so we ended up closing early.
Okay.
So, that's, that was a part of that. Primarily, there was a few diehards for the rides and we had a couple thousand, few thousand people show up for the rodeo. But it rained pretty much most of the rodeo, so we just made a decision to close a few hours early. There's, in the past, there's been a pretty good amount that have come out for that last Sunday, but with, with the weather the way it was.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment that we talked about increasing prices at the gate, but there's still the free, free time in the morning from.
Right, it's still, it's still free till one P M. Monday through Friday for our lunch, for the lunch crew to come in. For those that want to come out and see what's going on at the fair, get some fair food for lunch and check out the attractions and hopefully decide to come back later on.
Other questions or comments? Scott, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. We'll go to item thirteen. To consider a motion to authorize the emergency management director to sign a grant agreement with the South Dakota Office of Homeland Security for Record Management CAD Systems. Lynn DeYoung, good morning, Lynn.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lynn DeYoung, Emergency Management. In front of you is a grant agreement with the State Department of Homeland Security for a hundred thousand dollars. As you recall, in the last eighteen months or so, the city and the county have been working to transition to a new CAD system. That CAD system is funded in part by grant dollars. Last year at this time, we brought forward two grant agreements, one for approximately four hundred ninety-one thousand. And then a little later on, after the first year, the year we brought another one for a hundred thousand. This is the third one in line for an additional hundred thousand and that'll be added to the, to reduce the total project cost. And of course, the city and the county have an agreement to figure out all that cost and everything that's managed by the I T department. And I know Monte will be bringing information forward on that in the future. So, what I need from the commission is just a authorization to sign electronically the grant agreement so that we can proceed with payment for this project.
Thank you. Lynn, does anyone have any questions about the agreement? I think this we have done in the past.
Yep. This is, you know, like I said, the third in the line and this brings the total from Homeland Security funds for this project to six hundred ninety-one thousand and change. So, it's certainly a reduction in what the city and the county would have to spend out of general fund dollars, so, yep.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to accept this grant. It's hard to turn down a hundred thousand dollars.
We have a motion in a second to approve the grant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We have a little, I would say, description slash legal issue going back to item number seven A., which was brought to our attention. The address is incorrect, but the legally described lots are correct. So, Maggie's going to help us get that corrected.
Mr. Chairman, I think the appropriate practice here would be to go back to agenda item number seven. And the, whoever made the original motion and second would just agree to table that motion and then make a new motion to amend the request for sealed bids to correct the address. And the address is stated multiple times in the, in the notice.
Okay.
So, if the individuals who originally made the motion and second.
I think it was, I think I made the motion, didn't I? So, I make a motion to amend my original motion and with a correction of the correct address and that it is a sealed bid. Is that enough for you?
Yep, and then if the, whoever seconded.
It would be me, so I'll unsecond and second.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I'd just take a roll call vote so that there was clarity.
What is the address we're substituting in? I'm sorry.
Do you want to go ahead and read it?
It's my understanding, Commissioner, that the address in the request for sealed bids is nine oh eight West Avenue North, Sioux Falls. And that the correct address is nine oh eight Northwest Avenue.
Yep.
Not Northwest, two words, or excuse me, Northwest, two words, not Northwest, one word. Fourth was misplaced.
Yep.
Maybe we could just sell both properties if there is one.
Wow, double our money.
We're going to ask for a roll call vote to correct that address.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Motion unanimously passes to correct that.
Correct and publish, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Are we good now?
Yes.
Good, good, good. We'll go back to.
Item fourteen.
Item fourteen. Item fourteen is to consider a motion to authorize the acceptance of a twenty thousand dollar donation to the Minnehaha County Emergency Management Office from Energy Transfer Partners. And that donation be placed in the L E P C Agency Fund for Future Projects. Lynn?
Good morning, Commissioners. It's nice for a little break over here. So, once again, Lynn DeYoung, Emergency Management. As you recall, on about the twenty-eighth of September, I forwarded an email to you guys that we had received, basically. On the county web system, there's an opportunity to ask questions. So, a web question came in from Energy Transfer Partners indicating their willingness to donate twenty thousand dollars to Minnehaha County for first responders within our area. So, they indicated that they would be donating this twenty thousand dollars to each county along the pipeline route. And if you recall from that project, the pipeline starts in North Dakota and then comes down South Dakota into Iowa and then terminates over in Illinois. So, a total of fifty counties are covered with this, within this agreement, or excuse me, within this donation from the start to the end. Energy Transfer Partners is making the same donation to each one of us in South Dakota. I included the donation timeline, so you can take a look at that. Tomorrow, on the eighteenth of October, they'll be starting in Campbell, McPherson, Edmonds and Falk Counties and doing a ceremony at ten o'clock. And then they move down to Huron for Spink, Beadle, Kingsbury, Minor in Huron, or in Minor Counties in Huron. And then at five thirty, they'll move to Lake, McCook, Minnehaha, Turner and Lincoln Counties. As part of this process, they asked the emergency managers to get together and meet and come up with specific items that were looked at purchasing. Through our discussions, we thought that the timeframe that they suggested was pretty short to come up with actual items for expenditure. So, we forwarded back to them the following project areas, including hazardous materials training, emergency communications, social media training, S B A training and equipment, all hazards, personal protective equipment, regional exercise, coordination and planning. They accepted that and they will be discussing that during the ceremonies on Wednesday. It should also be noted that they, as part of this process, they're also donating to local FFA and four H clubs within the area. And it's not uncommon for community businesses to donate like this to agencies. You know, in the county, there's a lot of philanthropy efforts or donations out there. So, I guess I would answer any questions that the commission would have. And then in working with the auditors department, the budget and finance, Kim Anderson, she recommends and during our discussions, that this be placed in the L E P C fund. Typically, on a yearly basis, we get funds from, from the state of South Dakota, which are based on hazardous material sites that we have. Those funds come into the L E P C fund and then they're basically allowed to be spent on these same items that are here. So, be happy to answer any questions and then looking for a motion from the commission.
You already know that I have a couple.
Yep.
We talked about that. First of all, can you help me or remind me what the L E P C Agency Fund is and how long it's been around and what the restrictions are?
So, the L E P C fund, basically, it was created after, and I forget the year, but there was a large chemical explosion in Bhopal, India, a long time ago. So, after that happened, policymakers in the federal government came together and decided that the public had a right to know what chemicals and chemical facilities were within their community. On a yearly basis, those agencies are required to fill out what are called Tier Two reports. And that report indicates the type and quantity of chemicals that they store in their facility. One of those, so it's a triplicate form. They send one with a fee into the state of South Dakota. They send one to the emergency management office and then they send one to the rural fire department. So, for example, the facility up in Colton that you approved several years ago, that facility would locate, or would notice on all of their, all the chemicals that they have and then, excuse me, any emergency procedures and response effort that's, are required to go to those. So, they put that in there, that fund, or then they re, they put a fee in South Dakota, takes those fees and they take a cut off of that and then they send it back to the counties. And they send it back to the counties based on the number of facilities that they have and a base amount and all of those things. It goes into the L E P C fund, which is recommended by the State Department of Legislative Audit, so we follow their process. And then we're allowed to spend it on basically the same items that are listed here. Training, communication, social media, I mean, anything that revolves around general all hazards response. And we've done that since before I've been here. So, I guess I don't have an exact date on the commissioner, but it's for a long time.
Go ahead.
Lynn, so how did the, how does the public get that information then? How does the public access what chemicals are stored within?
So, if they choose, if they want to know, they can always call my office. A couple of years ago, we were actually, just after the state changes open meeting records law, the Argus leader came forward and did a couple investigations on getting plans, getting information, all of that stuff. And we were one of five or six counties that fully complied and gave them that. So, it's free to access at our office at any time that they want. Do we go out and aggressively advertise it? No, we probably don't. But if they have any questions, they can sure call us and we'll give them the information.
So, the state doesn't publish that information?
They are working on transitioning over to a new computer system to, yes, to be able to access it at a state level and access it at the county level. But truly, it's one of those things that only those people that are most interested go out and try to gather the information, so. I mean, it's just not a request we have a lot of times.
Right.
So, but it is good to know that, like I said, we were happy to provide that for any person that wants to.
I don't know, and you and I talked about this briefly and I sent out some information, but I have a, just a perception issue with the fact that for months and months, we've had this pipeline go through and the conversations about how safe it was and all those kinds of things. And supposedly it is. And now the company's spending a million dollars to support any hazardous material issues. It seems like there has to be some restrictions tied to this rather than what I see as a perception problem, I guess. And perception in most cases is usually fact. Is there a way that we can restrict this so that?
You know, I, I think if the commission comes up with restrictions, yeah, I mean, I don't thi, once they, I mean, they've indicated to us that they want it, like I said, to be spent on first responders. So, anything within that first responder realm, you know, I think we could do. So, that's certainly up to the prerogative of the commission. Obviously, it comes to us unencumbered, so to speak, but I mean, I think there's no reason you couldn't. It's no, yeah, I mean, I think that's prerogative of the commission, so.
Does anyone else have any comments or am I just dreaming about my perception problem?
Just a.
Commissioner?
Just a question, what kind of restrictions would you want to put on? I mean, it's restricted to first responders. What are you thinking as far as more restriction?
First responders or volunteers in general categories that don't get reimbursed. But we have, let's say, the elevator accident that was on issue. Is that monies that can be used to help with that, frankly, that claim? Or is it go to a first responder who is a volunteer that volunteers their time and effort? There was no cost to us for the, for the first responders, as I understood it, other than the training.
Yeah, I guess I'm not exactly familiar with the, exactly what instance you're talking about. But generally, as I've been thinking through this donation and what we're going to potentially do, you know, I intend on, and I've had conversations already with members from the sheriff's office. You know, I'll have a conversation tomorrow night with the rural fire chiefs group and what they think. But my initial impression is that these are one-time dollars. Let's spend it on things that are not consumable, so to speak. You know, let's not spend it on, and I had this discussion yesterday with the law enforcement group, but let's not spend it on a new laptop that goes in a car because in three years, that'll be consumable. But let's spend it on X, Y, Z or potentially, let's spend it on some training that we can get multi-years worth of value out of. So, do we have things, or do I have general parameters? Yes, but because of the short timeframe, I haven't put together a specific list. And that's why even working with the, the company, we said, listen, it's just too short of a timeframe to come up with the exact. I don't think we make good decisions in a three-week timeframe. Let's look at it and come up with things. I mean, if you look at, you know, instances that happened during the pipeline, during the construction in Minnehaha County, we hardly knew they were there, really. I mean, except for some additional revenue for the fair, for the fair that they had out at the camping. I think I can count one person that fell inside the trench and the Colton Fire Department went out and got him out. Typical, it could have happened anywhere. We didn't have those. But if you look at other instances along the pipeline, I think they were significant, especially up in North Dakota. So, we want to take a look at lessons learned from there and how, how we can approach that here. But that's not the only thing that we're probably short of. We're probably short of some other training areas that we could utilize these dollars for in the future. So, like I said, I don't have any specific thing in mind yet and I don't think any of the groups do because I haven't had a whole lot of time to, to chit chat with them. But my initial impression, like I said, let's not lock ourselves into a short-term type of thing because I don't, I don't think it pays value down the road.
Well, I think, go ahead, Commissioner.
I just would say that, you know, I think that the perception issue, frankly, I shared. I think some of it was just the way it was communicated to us without any opportunity for us to kind of understand context and, and think about it. So, I think having a discussion about it this morning is really, frankly, very helpful. You know, I share Commissioner Bar's earlier statement, it's hard to turn down a gift, you know? A gift is a gift and we're constantly struggling for financial resources here. And so, you know, I appreciate the gift. It's the perception of what, you know, it's the perception that somehow we are approving of the whole process of the pipeline and I don't think that we are in a position to do that and frankly, wouldn't want to, to be in, to be in that role. But as I, as I thought about this more over the weekend, because I had a lot of windshield time this weekend, you know, I, I think ultimately, a gift is a gift. We need to take it, but we do need to think carefully about how, how we use this for the best, in the best interest of our citizens. And, you know, it is interesting to me, the discussion about the chemical reporting and, you know, that there are, there are other situations in our county where we might have to respond to chemical issues. And, and I think frankly, training and making sure that we have folks that are able to handle those very unique and special situations would be something worthwhile to use this money for.
And, you know, just, you know, when this came across our email and you got it quite quickly after that because, you know, the five local emergency managers that are listed here and will be there. here and will be there tomorrow, we all started calling, you know, what the heck's going on? Is this, you know, somebody trying to get our banking account information and everything? So we had a lot of questions, too, about it, but, you know, they really are the drivers in the process, and we had the discussion, too, that, you know, listen, if any other group came to our county, whether it's this one or something else, and offered the same amount, we would probably recommend taking that, too, unless it's a group that's way just not socially acceptable and everything, and there, those are those out there. But, you know, philanthropy is a big part of what the business community does, they just get to choose how to do it and everything, and, you know, we haven't, haven't had anything like this in my time and, and everything, so it certainly is unusual. And I respect the communications and the questions, because I don't think we should take it lightly because of what could happen in the future, based on events that we don't know that are out there, so.
Well, fast and unrestricted usually aren't two things I like to use in the same sentence. So Commissioner Hyburger.
I agree with, with Gene as far as a gift is a gift, because if, if they came and they said they were going to give us, you know, ten thousand dollars to put in a new park in the rural county, would we say no? I mean, if they're going to put new park equipment somewhere, I mean, just because it's, it's tied to emergency management, I still think a gift is a gift, and I think we need to go forward with it.
You're having a meeting tomorrow with the rest of the ambulance services, or I mean, the fire chiefs, and then meeting with the group tomorrow night?
So today, we're having rural emergency evidence, this isn't something that's on the list, but tomorrow, I'll be meeting with all the fire chiefs in the county at a regular scheduled county fire meeting. I've already had some law enforcement discussions, you know, just letting them know that, you know, is there group projects? Should we look at this as a third, kind of a third fire, or law enforcement, a third fire rescue, and maybe a third general type of overall county readiness? Because there are other, you know, there are other opportunities, like I said, to, to get better as county, that can be, start out as emergency management issues, but transition over into other things, and that would be, you know, emergency communications, social media training, all of those things. So, yeah, we'll be getting together in the next couple weeks to discuss, you know, exactly what that is, and we can sure bring you, you know, back information if, if you want it. My, the other thing I did want to say is, is, you know, I don't intend probably to spend any of this until after the first of the year or go forward spending with it, because it gives us a little bit of buffer time and everything to make some of those better decisions. So, you know, I don't, even though we have, you know, we'll receive the check hopefully in the next couple of days, I still don't think that there's an immediate rush out there to go and, and do something, and, but I'll still be out there listening, and the groups will be discussing it, so.
Any other questions, comments?
Do we need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
We will, yes.
I would make the motion to accept this gift.
Second.
Any comments? Commissioner Bender?
My only comment is that I think after this thoughtful discussion, it would be helpful if you'd come back to us when you make a decision about how this, these funds will be used. I think it would be helpful just to keep it on top of our mind and help us better understand the process.
I would agree with that wholeheartedly.
What's that?
I would agree with that wholeheartedly, that there needs to be some recommendations that were brought forth from that group, and they are probably going to be restricted to however the group decides to use them, not just to accept a gift and then.
Yep, we'll bring back.
Have a concern down the road.
Yep, like I said, I wouldn't anticipate that I'd have that until after the first of the year, we're getting close to the end of the budget season and some of those things, so we have plenty of time to do this right, we don't have time to do it over, and we don't have funds to do it over, so.
Okay. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to accept the gift from the Energy Transfer Partners with a report to come later. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item fifteen is to consider a motion to approve or deny solid waste permit seventeen dash oh one for the Sioux Falls Regional Sanitary Landfill. Scott Anderson.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, County Planning Director, and just to give you a little bit of an update and overview of, of the process, every five years, we work with the sanitary landfill. We have a conditional use permit or a solid waste permit, which is renewable every five years. We've done this for the last twenty years. As you know, the sanitary landfill is located in Minnehaha County, in the southwest part of the county, and we work cooperatively with the city of Sioux Falls, our county, and, and a compact with many other counties for the operation and the use of that sanitary landfill. So as part of that, the solid waste permit that we issued for the operation of the sanitary landfill is going, will expire at the end of the year. The city of Sioux Falls has submitted new information, any changes in the operation they've indicated. I've provided that information to you, and they're, they're in compliance with everything that we require for our solid waste permit, and I would ask that you approve the, the solid waste permit seventeen dash one for the continued operation of the sanitary landfill for another five years. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer it.
Anyone have any questions for Scott?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the solid waste permit dash seventeen oh, seventeen dash oh one for the Sioux Falls Regional Sanitary Landfill. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay.
Thank you.
Motion unanimously passes. Item sixteen, our liaison reports, does anyone have any?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We're not meeting with the Planning Commission until next Monday night, but there was an issue that was pending since withdrawn, where a rural group wanted to move four eligibilities from one property to another, and the city of Sioux Falls was opposed to it based on the fact that they don't want additional density of dwellings in, in the county area. And those, those eligibilities are a valuable asset to folks that, that possess them in the rural area, and to have the city oppose it is a little concerning in the sense that they don't get to vote for the mayor or the city council, and yet the, the city is apparently able to take this privilege away from them potentially. And it's just an issue of the growth of the city and the growth of the county, and where there is friction occasionally. And just wanted to call it to our attention as a potential issue that will come up again, because the, the applicant withdrew his application, but has sold the properties to someone else who will reanimate the project.
Any other liaison reports? Any new business? Any old business, new or old?
I think it's old, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I just, I want to make a comment and put Mark on the spot. I heard that Mark is leaving the chamber, am I correct? And is going on to a new position, and he has been here pretty faithfully covering our meetings, and I love reading your mini-report, because sometimes I find out things that I missed. It's been a really good mini-report, and we won't miss you. Did you want to say a word about where you're going, or when you're going, or, but you're here, this is the opportunity.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Mark Lee with the Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce, still. Yeah, I was fortunate enough to be able to accept a position as the Sioux Falls Market President for Relia Bank Dakota. Relia Bank is a, is the current version of the bank that has been in my family since nineteen sixty-eight. My grandfather actually started with the bank in Esteline in nineteen forty-four, and he acquired it in nineteen sixty-eight, and now my uncle, Dave Johnson, and his family own the bank. As you know, they're opening a new branch down at eighty-fifth and Minnesota, and out of the blue, and in a weak moment, he asked me if I'd be interested in taking that responsibility on and helping lead the bank into kind of the Sioux Falls area. So, yeah, it'll be a transition, I've been doing this for four years, I've loved it, I love the people I get to work with, the experiences, the issues we deal with, and I will still be around for about two months. So, anyway, thank you, though, for the acknowledgement, I really appreciate it, Commissioner.
Thank you for your service. We will miss you, even if we can go down to Lincoln County now and harass you.
[laughing].
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say, on a different subject slightly, thanks to my fellow Commissioners and to our county staff for attending the groundbreaking at the museum archive facility. I really appreciated everyone being there very, very much. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments? If not, we do not have an executive session, so I had to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Emoted.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.